Good morning, everybody. I'll call over to the ready scheduled board supervisors meeting for this Tuesday, October 30th, 2018, and ask that everybody please join the board as we honor America with a pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, thank you and good morning. So, a lot happened on our agenda today, not in terms of numbers of items, but the items that we're covering are really substantial. Uh, so let's get right to it. First item, as always, is public comment number one. It's an opportunity for members of the public to address topics on today's agenda, or really anything you'd like to address. Come right on up to the microphone, anybody wishing to do so. And seeing no one move to the microphone, we'll move on to Ames Economic Development Commission Quarterly Report. Uh, looks like we've got Dan Colhan and Brendan Dreyer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, morning.
A good friendly end of this direction of our presentation. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna lead off efforts, uh, and then, um, we have Dustin to talk about economic services. Dan, any opening comments?
No, we're glad to be here. Thank you for your time.
So, uh, let's, uh, start out our comments talking about giving you really an update of where we're at with our workforce solution activities, uh, really ending September 30th, uh, kinda some great information on unemployment and all sorts of things. So, uh, in terms of unemployment, uh, last week we received the September numbers. Uh, we are down to 1.4 percent, actually a little less than maybe I even thought it was gonna be. Uh, again, the important thing to do is really to look at where we were a year ago. Yeah, and a year ago, we were probably sitting in the seat talking about how low 1.9 percent was. So, uh, realize it's, it's very low, and as you look in general, uh, over the last 12 months, uh, we've added 900 jobs in Story County, and so...
Brenda's still the lowest MSA in America.
Still lowest MSA.
And so, let's just, uh, that's metropolitan statistical area. That includes all of Story County and some areas even beyond Story County and Boone County. Uh, but there's 300 and some odd MSAs in America, is that right? And Ames is the lowest, uh, and again, including, including all of Story County in America.
So, I don't anticipate a whole lot of change between now and the end of the year. Might dip a little lower as we have already did November and December, but, um, should end the year probably the lowest again, and, um...
And put the 900 jobs in one year, so these are, these are private sector jobs that we're talking about?
There, there is, because there's really not been a big problem in the public sector, so...
So, put that in context. Uh, how does that compare, so while I say free record, from 2000 to 2010, the entire decade we added 500 private sector jobs, but how does the 900 compare to the last couple of years? Similar or more?
I'll need to defer to you on that question.
Well, we're up over 7,000 jobs since that time, so year to year, it's, it's really varied, but, yeah, continues to grow.
Super.
And, you know, some of those years would have been during times when Iowa State was growing, so it would have had years where there were a higher number of public sector jobs created, but, uh, the, the real message here is there's lots to celebrate in terms of, uh, continued low unemployment, uh, strong job growth, um, where, from where we're at.
Well, and it makes our job board and our workforce development, which I'm sure you're getting ready to get to...
I am. Let's, let's talk about the job board. So, uh, remember, an important initiative to all of us is, uh, Story County Job Board. It's called Work in Ames, but we really highlight that it's a gateway to jobs in Story County. So, as we look at some of those key statistics for our job board, year to date, we ended, uh, the end of September with 88,201. Uh, it's a standalone site, so, uh, those are searches directly on that site. If you look at our digital media, uh, Facebook likes, 1,200. Twitter impressions for the month of September were 4,500. Uh, we have 647 registered job seekers that have created profiles on Work in Ames. We have 302 employers that are registered users, uh, on the site, and if you do a search there today, there's over 1,700 jobs posted.
Any feel at all anecdotally, Brenda, of the 1,700 jobs, what kind of pay range we're talking about? Is that lower into the pay scale? What, what is that all about?
So, to be honest with you, a lot of the positions that end up on Work in Ames are, are really, um, positions that are full-time employment opportunities, uh, so they are, um, but they're all, all levels of opportunities. So, there are many positions at mainstream living posted. Uh, today, there was a, a position posted for Story Construction. There's positions posted for the county. Uh, you know, we don't see a lot of hourly part-time positions posted on Work in Ames, um, and really, I always say, those folks are recruiting with flags outside their businesses on doff. But, uh, so really, it's, we have a lot of full-time opportunities out there, and that's really, I think, part of our challenge and part of our discussion is, we know, we're not naive enough to say that there, everybody in Story County is thriving. Uh, we have a lot of underemployment that needs to be addressed, and a lot of our strategies relate to upskilling, creating training opportunities, doing a better job getting the message out to, um, the fact that there are great jobs and that there are full-time opportunities. So, um, that's a really a part of our focused efforts to figure out who we're, who we're not talking to that we need to be talking to. And again, I'd encourage the three of you and everybody in the audience, too, you know of folks that are working part-time and, uh, getting them to Work in Ames so they can see the number of full-time opportunities that are there. I know a full-time opportunity doesn't work for everybody, but it would be great if we could start connecting folks to jobs where they could count on the hours that they're working, get a benefit plan to support their family's health care. Uh, but again, that's, I think, the challenge that we all need to work on and, and getting that message out to people that, that may be struggling in our communities. Um, in terms of career fairs, this is one of the ways we try to get our message out. Uh, we've been working with, uh, the team over in Marshalltown at their Iowa Works office. Um, we had great participation from Story County employees, uh, in a September event, and, uh, while the traffic was a little lighter than we expected, our employers would tell you that they had great conversation with some very good candidates. So, sometimes you need to pick, uh, quality over quantity, uh, even though I'm a numbers person and wish we'd see more people. We are gonna plan another event with those folks on February 20th, and we are promoting that to our employers. Um, Iowa Works, I would just remind everybody, we, we were thrilled to have an Iowa Works office now in Ames and Story County. I tell our employers and I tell everybody I can tell is, please use that office, because if we don't utilize that, it would be subject for closure again. And so, we need to utilize the staff and support that's there, be good stewards of our state's investment to put that facility in Ames and Story County. We're working with that team to try to get in an event before the end of the year, kind of a push for the start of the year, either the first or the second week of December. We are wrapping up a few virtual career fairs yet this year, and again, remember, this is to really reach beyond our borders and build, uh, national awareness of job opportunities that we have available. So, we've wrapped up a nursing, uh, career fair, um, actually on Thursday, I'll be doing a Hiring Our Heroes event. Um, so again, we've got a great program to support veterans relocation into Story County. That is an easy thing to talk about, uh, in this career fair. So, that'll be on Thursday, and then later in November, we're actually, um, doing an event focused at college athletes. So, um, I feel like we've got a pretty good pulse, don't we, former college athletes? Um, in terms of what those people need, in terms of trying to adapt, uh, they don't often have the time to go out and do formal job searches, so it'll be a, a great group. I feel like a lot of them will know where we're located, will leave with, or, you know, home to Iowa State University, so, uh, very excited about the opportunity to participate in that event, and then, like I said, that'll bring to closure our virtual events, uh, for the year. But that really allows us to build quite a, a prospect list that we can continue to market to, uh, in terms of continuing to push out Work in Ames and the opportunity come to live here at work. So, um, the Ames High Event, I thought you would appreciate this number. The county was a great participant in this event, and I was so excited about the different opportunities where our students had a chance to visit with the elected officials, with the county staff, uh, to stop by the booth. Um, it was a great awareness, and you were strong supporters on a number of fronts, but we had 1,450 students go through that event, 135 breakouts. That was a monster amount of activities to break out and, uh, schedule 55 exhibitors, and again, thank you for that. There's the new office, uh, number or address for Iowa Works as well. In terms of Home Based Iowa, this is a strong partnership we have with the county. Uh, we refocused our efforts a year ago. Uh, we've had 178 resumes matched to the county. We send introduction emails. We drop them a personal note from our offices. Uh, the county follows up with the personal notes. We follow up with our relocation videos and another email. We send them the relocation guide, um, and we have, uh, the number of Story County Home Based Iowa employers has grown by about 20 this year alone. So, we're excited about those efforts, and we've had a few successes in breaking books here. In terms of K-12 engagement, uh, here's the numbers for fall. 13 students, eight school districts for scale, and again, every school district within the county is involved in scale. May not be a large number, but they're involved. Um, we're offering two tracks this, uh, this semester, engineering and business communications. Uh, in terms of the Ames programs for our business engagement collaborative, we have 13 students there, and actually, they're meeting in our garden level for the next two years. The bottom picture is them actually pitching to us how they wanna, uh, glam up our space for their office for the next two years. So, the partner of the school district is actually going to be partnering with us to, to equip that space, uh, for those students this year and into next. And the other thing I wanted to visit a little bit about was, we've worked really hard with our partners at DMAC to really put together some upskill training. Quite frankly, we've struggled getting participants to sometimes sign up for those opportunities, and we ended up canceling them. I'm thrilled to announce that, uh, last week, we were able to start, uh, an industrial maintenance technician training class. We went to our local manufacturers. Each of them brought forward potential people that could be upskilled. Um, it was free to the participants, free to the company. Some of them decided to pay their folks while they were attending the classes at night. We've taken care of books and materials. DMAC has pulled out all the punches and all the different funding pods they have available to make this opportunity available. It's gonna run for 20, 20 weeks, um, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and we're very excited. There were 15 people at the actual information meeting. I think we're gonna end up with around 12. So, more importantly, if we can get this done, we'll have a story to tell for other folks that might be interested in those opportunities. And finally, um, we have just recently joined the Technology Association of Iowa in being a sponsor for that Iowa project. So, we hear from a number of our industries that challenges in recruiting, uh, a technical workforce, a very skilled IT workforce, and a partnership with this organization will allow us access to people that have indicated an interest in, um, our companies knowing more. They're located all over the country, um, but have ties to Iowa. So, stay posted. Like I said, in the last few weeks, we've just inked that deal and are very excited about what that's gonna mean in terms of a partnership specifically supporting, um, our companies that are needing that skilled IT resource. And with that, I'll let Dustin...
Before you go, questions for Brenda regarding workforce, Marty or Doris?
On a small scale, and I use the word scale loosely in the sense that it was nice at the Stark County Economic Development meeting that we had last week, that we had two communities that use kids. We, you know, people look at what the scale project, uh, project is, and what do they do? Zering and Co. are having their websites for young high school students, because that is how they greet the world in a lot of ways, and we have these technology proficient teenagers, and we give them this task. Collins is, uh, right there, uh, wondering why they, you know, I mean, they can get in on this one, but the thing is, this is how we turn a program into a tangible, and you will see here in the next several months' time, two much better and, uh, more user-friendly websites for the communities in our county.
So, again, this is really the charge of all of us, is that, you know, our office may facilitate, uh, these initiatives, but here's our, really, all of our initiatives. So, part of our jobs is to connect to our businesses, connect to our communities, if there's any of these services that we can be better utilizing and pushing out beyond, um, what we're doing today.
Brenda, thanks.
During the transition, I'd also offer that, at the same time, uh, there's, there's an evolution to our program of the workforce. We're really trying to listen to our, our partners, not only our, not only our funders, but also a lot of our companies that may not be providing a source of revenue to this, at this point in time. Uh, so we're continuing to listen to the experts that are in HR, because hands-on, this, this is our biggest issue. You know, it, I often talk to groups around the county, and I say, at one level or another, there will always be pretty good job creation and churn in Ames and Story County. We just need more people to stay. And, and again, we're doing this diversity on, uh, this gives me this symposium on building inclusive organizations tomorrow. It's a pretty cool deal. We've got a nice agenda, got a couple hundred people coming to the Gateways Town Ames for what we hope is the first of many, uh, programs like this, but we have to work hard to make sure that our, our companies understand inclusivity and diversity, so that no matter where you're from or, or your lifestyle, you can take a job in Story County and be successful and thrive. And so, that's the purpose of that. That's the purpose of the workforce program, because they, yeah, we are number one, and it's, it's great, and it's also a bummer, as, as we all know. And, and, you know, another 900 jobs, uh, this past year, look at the wall behind you there. Uh, that's a great looking plaque, by the way. But those three companies alone, you think about the job creation there, you think about the job creation right here in Nevada with mid-states growing, with Perks announcement here in the last 45 days is, is monumental. I mean, that, that's a career for some city administrators. I told Matt Marsden, that's a career project for you. I spoke, we'll have more. The point is, the point is that we're gonna continue to see things like that. We know that, uh, I'll, I'll use HAC as an example. They've added almost 100 people this year without telling anybody about it, but their growth is so, so rapid, they're adding people. They're adding people in an unemployment environment of 1.4 percent, so it's harder and it takes longer. And so, that's why the investment you make in our efforts is so important, and all the companies that invest that at the same time is so important. The work that Brenda's doing is so critical...
Absolutely.
Because we don't say, we're not saying it's a smart thing, we've got all the answers, because we don't, but we sure are trying to hard find those. So, thank you.
Absolutely, and, and just to underscore, you know, workforce is an issue, but what a, what a great issue to have, because it's an indicator of how positive things are, right? And so, we've just gotta keep wrestling with it. Brenda, thank you for your work, and, um, and I've said many times, this, this is all hands on that. This is all of us pulling in every direction that we can find and try to get this. Thanks for you guys' leadership on it. All right, so now we're gonna talk about, uh, economic development. Dustin, welcome.
Yeah. Hey, Dustin. So, good morning to you all. With all the activity in Story County, it's hard to believe that this is my first quarterly report to you all, so, um, just to start out, I'd like to thank you for your support. When I go about implementing this contract, I constantly think about how intentional it's a lot, it seems, and it's really critical if we're gonna have this hyperpolicistic, uh, community in economic development that is critical for rural, rural and ruralization. So, just to start out here, I wanna go with a metric or a set of metrics that Brenda has, has used many times, so this is probably familiar to you. And the main thing that you should take away from this is that, even though there's a transition period in our office where Brenda was facing out of this role and I was facing in, we haven't slumped at all of our level of commitment and engagement to our rural communities. And I would say that, in fact, the community contacts, uh, grow there. That's a conservative estimate for the number of contacts and communications that we've had with folks in these 11 communities and throughout unincorporated Story County. Uh, 109, that would include things like phone calls and emails, house specific conversations, as well as face-to-face visits. Um, you can see the year-to-date as well as the quarterly, uh, figures. I included that separation just so you know, um, that given the quarter starting, uh, well, given the transition starting beginning quarter, uh, you can kinda see how that pairs up with the progress so far. Obviously, project development meetings, that's on, on par as well with what we see here today and all the others, too.
And Dustin, before you go on, just, we, we got quite a few people in the audience who may not be familiar with what this is or where it came from, and so, Dan and I might be the right people to talk about this. So, it's either five or six years ago, Dan, is that right? Five or six years ago, the county entered into a contract with the ADC to provide economic development services throughout the county. When we entered into that contract, it was with the entire ADC, but there has typically been a point person within the ADC that has taken on this responsibility. We started with Drew Cam, who did an exceptional job, and now has moved on to other responsibilities. Then Brendan Dreyer came in, again, did an exceptional job, and now has taken on other responsibilities. And now we have Dustin, who is starting out, doing a phenomenal job. We're excited about the future, but the primary responsibility of this contract is to make sure that we have professional economic development help for our smallest communities. Wherever it is. All right, what are you doing over there?
Pretty proud of myself.
What was Fred Sanford's wife's name? Come and mazy, I'ma get... Oh. Yeah, I was, I was just saying, the responsibility is to get out and offer professional economic development services to our smallest communities that couldn't otherwise reasonably afford to be able to do them, and so, that's what this conversation is about for anybody who's not aware. Didn't mean to interrupt, Dustin, but I thought it was important to get...
And just briefly, that economic development, uh, five or six years ago, when we put the contract together initially, was about the most traditional sense of economic development. There's been an evolution of that as well, in terms of, uh, economic development is different in a community. It depends on the, the needs and their infrastructure, primarily the needs. And so, our team has worked on a wide variety of things and a wide variety of programs that could help those communities with things, too, and so, that's, that's been important. We've, we've had the right people, though, doing that work. And Brenda really brought a sense of very rural community development to the table, and that's really, really opened our eyes, I think, as an organization to different ways we can develop.
Well, and I, I just wanna underscore that, 'cause I think that is right on, Dan, and I hadn't really considered it, but instead of, so it was originally conceived as an economic development service to these communities, and what it's absolutely become is community development to all these communities. So important, and we're seeing so many great successes, um, that, that are because, fact, a lot of different factors going into these successes, but one of the key ones is the service that you guys are providing and the fact that you're there to provide the foundational work necessary for some of these communities to do some really cool things in their, on their main streets and in their towns.
That's actually a, a great segue to the next section here on downtown development. And so, like we're talking about, rural realities are different than urban realities, and so, uh, when you think about downtown development in places like Ames, for instance, there's a lot of, there's a potential for repair and development, and there's high utilization of buildings. In our rural communities, that's not often the case, and so, it's important that we're preserving our building, our cultural assets downtown, and those things contribute to the sense of place those communities in the rural area, which is really important for, uh, for local pride, and it spurs economic community development. And so, one thing, um, that we've been working on lately is the Community Catalyst Grant. You're probably familiar with this from the previous funding cycle with Zering, uh, but the IBA, uh, Iowa Economic Development Corporation, has increased that pool of funding to $3 million this year. Some of that's gonna be reserved for emergency situations like what we've seen in Marshalltown, but a big chunk of that's gonna go toward rural communities of under 1,500 and fewer people. And so, there's a good chance that our rural communities can take advantage of this, and it's not, I, I do ask this question to the folks at the Downtown Resource Center, it's not, they're not aiming to have a distributive effect, right? So, if you can have three or four projects in different communities in Story County, and if those are great projects and they meet the criteria of scoring this, then those can proceed as well. So, right now, uh, this week, actually, we're gonna submit the Catalyst pre-app for the city of Cambridge. We're gonna work with them on that, and that deadline's November 14. That'll open up the window of possibly for invitation to a full application, and that's on December 14th. So, again, that's $100,000 for a grant. It's matching, uh, however, those matching funds can come, uh, through any kind of donations. Collins also hosted an open house, I think many of you have toured all of your familiar with it, for a town of its size, such a impressive facility to have those types of amenities, and they actually attract people from outside of Collins itself. Over 80 memberships, um, and high utilization there.
Right.
Um, Zering's also making progress on, uh, the store preservation project in downtown. You're familiar with that, so I won't go too much into it, but I'll add that. Hanson Family Hospital is currently, uh, not isolated for November 1st here, but they're actually gonna push it back, they have some issues, practical difficulties in the office, but that's on the way. McCallsburg is working on adding amenities to its local park, and even though that's a community development issue, it's kind of a quality and life issue, that's important if we're gonna to attract those people to live in the communities, especially as we have the growth that we just talked about earlier, and places are looking for, you know, to house workforce and to attract those people to live, you know, towns. Um, and finally, Slayer's working, um, with a company, and we're working with a consultant for that company on a project that will help their downtown, uh, the business is one of their, their retail spaces. So, moving to industrial development, in Roland, uh, several years ago, they adopted the International Code for Buildings, that's the 2015 code, and they didn't really look at all the provision. They adopted a lump sum of documents. So, we're looking at evaluating those codes to see if they're appropriate for their community, and whether or not they're hindering development. Of course, we want safe buildings, we want them to, uh, constructions to comply with, with, uh, all the codes that are necessary. We just wanna make sure that we're, we're having development and achieving the potential that Roland has. Uh, we see continued progress on Larson's, uh, Larson Building sites, that's in their industrial park, and we're also working, uh, every month with the RADC, the Rural Area Development Corporation, on projects to help out their industrial development efforts as well as their housing development efforts. I gotta mention Collins, uh, just outside of Collins, uh, and this facility is now open, and that, to my knowledge, is the fastest-receiving storage facility and, like, this is the entire company, so that's a $14 million investment just outside of the city there. And then, just as I mentioned, those companies like Burr, EVN, 3M, the people that work at those companies, they're gonna live in some of these communities. In fact, they already do, and, uh, in McCallsburg and Roland, there are people that work at you. And so, we're gonna see the expansion of that, and we need to be positive of how it's gonna affect our communities and, uh, the yield for more housing development and so forth. So, community development. Um, we talked about this before, but Roland's whole company, they're, they're continuing to proceed on, I'm looking at this, or kinda cut down that cost a bit, just to make it more palatable for the community. Um, and then, even though I talked about downtown, I, I consider housing a rural community development initiative as well, and we're seeing units in downtown buildings, um, or in these plans to, to rely on these buildings, so, to include that downtown units. And when you're talking one or two or three units for Ames or Huxley or sort of city, that may not be at time, but for a place like Cambridge or Collins or Zering, that's a significant chunk of that housing, and, uh, so we have to keep an eye on that, and it's, it's breaking and proceeding with it. Catalyst Grant, by the way, is leading the way, is, is making that possible for those communities. Um, I gotta mention also, Mountain Corner, they're looking for someone to operate that business. That's a huge historic asset for that community and, uh, and for the county as well, even though, um, some of us might, you know, bypass it or drive by and not think anything, I mean, it's a huge, uh, part of the culture there. So, we, we're looking for someone to operate that business. I've reached out to a few of these and people that I know that work on similar projects with highway associations, um, so we're, we're just gonna look for someone to fill that goal by the end of the year hopefully. And then Collins is, uh, planning to create a mural of a store photograph in downtown. Uh, they actually just received funding out of previous Story County Economic Development meeting. Uh, basically, in the Great Depression, a photographer hired by the government came to Collins and snaps some photographs, and they have one of those preserved, and they're wanting to put a mural on their buildings to, uh, to honor that history. So, with that, thank you for your support. I'll take any questions you have.
Questions for Dustin or Dan?
None, thanks. Thanks for doing a great job, and the transition does seem to have been very smooth.
I appreciate the push out, and the worldview rethink as you progress through the economic, as now you, you mentioned it here, Dan, in the sense that now that we have gone in, your organization, the county, has moved into the, uh, meetings and private conversations such that they see you as a resource, they do the personal reach-outs. Dustin, you know, you're new to it, but I'm sure you're getting into, these people have been made aware of their value, that their success is our success, and we are doing everything in the behalf to not just move it in Ames, to make it exist, but every corner of the county counts. Of course, you go to these meetings, you know what the stories you hear, I'm sure you can regale us for the things that you discuss, but that we have, yeah, and you say that all hands on board, I think you would sit there and say, with the 15 communities we have in the county, I think they all would say that they feel part of the team now, but that wasn't that long ago again. So, thank you.
Well, what's funny to remember is the skepticism that this was met with from some of our small towns. Dan, you and I went out to some of these small towns and talked to them about it, and it, and it's gone from skepticism to complete reliance, where in many cases, Dustin is gonna be the first phone call, uh, for some of these small towns when they're, uh, when they're thinking of something. It is key, and it is completely based on the outstanding work, uh, of the ADC. I did want, there was an article, Dan, in the, uh, Des Moines Register a week or so ago on USDA, uh, the possibility of a, of a, you, large USDA facility coming. I think we're one of, what, 15 or 20?
136.
Okay, 136, uh, people who've been on it, but since it was in the Register, since Okay, 136 people who've been on it, but since it was in the Register, since it was in the Register, I want to give you a chance to just address what's going on there.
So the Secretary of Agriculture, Sonny Perdue, who's from, former governor of Georgia, I'll story, I think it shows possible. USDA has the National Institute of Food and Agriculture, and Economic Resource Service are both based in Washington, D.C. The thought of the Secretary and the President of the U.S. is that they could move some of those facilities out to where the constituents are. Well, they're both, so closely tied to ag, obviously, every land-grant school in the United States, like Iowa State or Kansas State, et cetera, is vying for this project. We submitted on behalf of one site in the Abbeville State University Research Park, about three weeks ago, there was a federal deadline, we submitted it through the Economic Development Authority. The Development Authority also had a site in Council Bluffs, in large part because they knew Omaha was going to be pitching, and the Omaha Council Bluffs MSA is one, and so Director Durham wanted a site in Council Bluffs as well. Following on, there was a few other sites across the central Iowa community that also submitted without the assistance of the Iowa Economic Development Authority. Now, I think the key takeaway from that is that there's a lot of competition, politics will certainly be involved in this process, as you think about a federal facility being located somewhere. There's lots of reasons why Vice President Pence might want it here at Purdue, or Secretary Sonny Perdue might want it in Athens at the University of Georgia, where he's from. And so the list goes on, of all the host of reasons that it may go someplace else. We think the most logical place is here, named Story County, given the significant USDA infrastructure we already have, and the target market we have for agriculture here in the center of America. Having said all that, please don't take that to the bank, I wouldn't suggest that it's going to be here for certain, but we've got a really compelling case for why it should be here. One of the things that was in the Des Moines Register was that we did provide a $2,500 incentive to every employee who works at those USDA facilities today, if they move to Ames or Story County. They move to Waukees, we'll think they're great, too, but we're not going to incent them. And one of the big pieces, the big caveats of this proposal was, we had to demonstrate workforce. We had to demonstrate that if this thing moved here, we could find people. Well, we lean heavily upon Iowa State University because of the graduates coming out of, primarily out of the College of Business, Statistics, and Economics, and to the College of Agriculture for a whole host of the National Institute of Food and Agriculture. So this, the question, we did the math for everybody, and said, well, that's 1.5 million dollars that the Ames community, or the A D C is what they quoted, is going to have to give to all these people to relocate here. But keep in mind, please, that we would not have put that in there if we thought all 600 people, there's 600 jobs associated with this project. If all 600 were coming, we probably would have already thought that $2,500 kicker, if you will. It would go to the person, because we can't set the federal government, we tried to distinguish our proposal from everybody else. Now, is $2,500 enough for you to relocate your family to the middle of America? I don't know. But the sense is, if 100 people moved, that would be a huge stretch. And so it's okay, we can raise that money, we can figure that out if we get to that point. So some of them said, well, does the A D C have $100,000 to just put on the table tomorrow? I said, oh, we don't. But sometimes you have to take a little cognitive risk, and that's what we did. It's okay, if 100 people moved, and we gave $2,500 bucks a person, it's $100,000, we can help you there. So cross your fingers, it'd be a great project.
It'd be a great project.
It's two four-story buildings, sending the South Side Research Park, but there's a long way to go before we've had any evidence of breaking ground on a project like this. But we are well-heeled and well-positioned for a project like this.
We're going to have to be at least one of the communities that they strongly consider.
I would hope so.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, next item is Consideration of Proclamation of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, County Attorney Jessica Reynolds and Sheriff Paul Fitzgerald. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Jessica Reynolds, sorry for interrupting me, and I'm proud to be joined today by Sheriff Paul Fitzgerald, as we recognize the October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Also present with us today, we've got Tess from Access, it's not Amasia, hi, Amasia. Do you have anyone else from Access? Oh, hi. And thank you very much for being with us and joining us for today as well. Part of the ceremony here today is our board chair presenting Access with donations that county employees have given to recognize the efforts that you make towards the community of that. As everyone can see, there are candles on the board table, there are 304 candles on the table, and those represent the domestic violence homicide victims in Iowa. Each candle bears their name. Between 1995 and September 2018, those are the 304 people in Iowa that have been killed by domestic violence-related homicides. 204 of them are female names, 41 are male names, that are intimate partners in domestic violence homicides. And there are 59 bystanders represented in those candles, 32 are children under age and teen. Obviously, in my work, I'm a prior domestic violence prosecutor, so I've seen the toll that domestic violence takes on communities and families. It's very serious, it's one of our most serious crimes that we prosecute. We all know in our line of work in law enforcement that domestic violence calls are some of the most dangerous calls that law enforcement responds to. There's a high level of violence that's involved, and if you look around the country, you'll see officers who have been shot responding to domestic violence calls are very serious. We also understand as a law enforcement community, that the quicker we can intervene in domestic violence situations, when they're brought to our attention, the less likely lethality is. And so as a law enforcement community in Story County, we're very collaborative in our approach on domestic violence. We all believe that it's our job, when we get a domestic assault, to make sure that we're intervening in that state. That may be the only chance that we get for the scrutiny at a homicide level. And domestic violence cases are particularly difficult to prosecute for a couple of reasons. One is, one to understand the cycle of violence, to understand why crime victims who are victimized by their abusers don't want to come forward. There's a lot of reasons. Many of them are emotionally dependent on their abuser, financially dependent on their abuser. Many of them still love the person that is abusing them. Some people are concerned about the loss of their children in relationships, should they leave their relationship. And so as prosecutors and law enforcement, we recognize that oftentimes we'll be taking these cases to trial without a victim testifying on our behalf, and that sometimes the victim may, in order to negotiate for safety, have to testify for the defendant. And so we use a proactive approach to these calls when we go on scene. We assume that we're not going to have a victim at trial, and so we collect other evidence via neighbors, physical evidence, photos of the home, and we make sure that we get DHS involved when children are present in the home, so that they can do an investigation and ensure safety of the children. This has been a really important collaboration in Story County through years of work. There was actually a different violence packet that our office and law enforcement has put together together, and that is done on scene, and that collects additional information in these cases that we use when we prosecute. Iowa laws started to recognize the seriousness of domestic violence over the years, and now there are increased penalties when strangulation is involved, and then a domestic violence assault. And that's because we know statistically that when an intimate partner strangles their partner in a domestic assault, that the person being strangled is seven times more likely to be murdered in a relationship. So as penalties have increased in that realm, that's been nice for us to see, that the legislature continues to recognize that. And on that note, we can move to proclamation, unless you have any other comments.
I would just say, starting out, that one of the first committees I was appointed to when I became sheriff, almost 27 years ago, was the Attorney General of Iowa, the Crime Victim Assistance Board. And working on that board, and being on the Supreme Court Domestic Violence Task Force, and working with Jessica as we have, I certainly appreciate, and Story County should all appreciate the leadership that County Attorney Reynolds gives in many areas, but this is certainly one of them. So to start out, the Proclamation of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Story County. Whereas, home should be a place of warmth, unconditional love, tranquility, and security for most of us. Home, however, and family can be indeed counted among our greatest blessings. Tragically for many Americans, these are blessings that are tarnished by violence and fear. And whereas, every nine seconds, a woman in the United States is assaulted by an intimate partner, and whereas, an average of three women are murdered by intimate partners in the United States every day, and a person experiencing strangulation in their relationship is seven times more likely to be murdered by their partner. And according to the American Psychological Association, the presence of a gun in domestic violence situations increases the risk of homicide by 500%.
And whereas, according to the Bureau of Justice Statistics Crime Data Brief, intimate partner violence, women accounted for 85% of the victims of intimate partner violence, men for approximately 15%. And whereas, women and men are not the only targets, children, the elderly, family pets, and responding law enforcement officers are counted among the victims. And whereas, according to a study by Break the Silence, 2006, witnessing violence is the strongest risk factor in transmitting violent behavior from one generation to the next. And whereas, according to the National Resource Center on Domestic Violence, approximately 23% of LGBTQ men and 50% of LGBTQ women experience abuse at the hands of their intimate partners. And whereas, domestic violence costs an estimated 8.3 billion annually in medical care, mental health services, and lost productivity on the job, women, men, and children living with domestic violence suffer higher rates of physical injuries, chronic health problems, depression, PTSD, attempted suicide, substance abuse, behavior problems for children, and homelessness. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Story County Board of Supervisors proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Story County, and urge our citizens to observe this month by becoming aware of the tragedy of domestic violence and supporting those who are working toward its end. Let's start with a motion to accept the proclamation.
I would...
Go ahead, you baby.
I would move that we accept this proclamation.
We got a motion in a second. I just want to say, so I'm, anybody who listens to me knows that I am a Story County fan, and I think we live in a fantastic community. But don't mistake that feeling that we live in a fantastic community with the, any belief that we don't have issues in our community. Domestic violence is clearly one of those major issues that we face here in Story County, but I am so pleased that we face it with the two of you leading us and your staffs, along with the entire support system, including Access and all of our other agencies, that try to provide the services necessary to break this cycle that we seem to be in. I just want to express, on behalf of the board, I hope, our appreciation to you guys for the work you do on our behalf and your staffs. Anything to add before we go? Morris or Marty?
You took my breath away when I walked in and saw the candles here. You said it was 95, they go back to 95. So I believe a woman that I knew is up here, and I knew her husband who killed her in Oklahoma also, and so it's up here.
Thanks, Morris. Anything further?
Aye.
All right, Olson?
Aye.
Kitty?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Story County, Iowa. Now, we're going to take a photo, I'm going to ask that everybody from the county's attorney's office, everybody here from Access, anybody who happens to be here from one of our other partner agencies, join us up here as we take this photo. And I have a basket.
Welcome to the county attorney's office.
I'm the basket.
I brought my older camera, because my good one was charging, so I, and I used to use this one for years, but I just don't trust it as much anymore, so let me try one more, sorry. Just to make sure we have what we need, there we go. Okay, we're going to hope we got it.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, guys.
My goodness.
Hey, Jess, how you doing?
Yeah, thanks, Terry.
All right, next item is Consideration of Street Plan for Fiscal Years 2019 through 2024.
Sorry.
All right. Ziering, start by introducing yourself.
Sure. My name is Clint Losz, I'm from the J O Hilton Group. We were hired to work with Story County here to do an update to the strategic plan. This has been a 4-on-1 process, starting in mid-June and coming through today. I listened to the October 9th Board of Supervisors meeting, very substantial discussion, review of the current draft that it is, I guess a really good discussion about back and forth on priorities and just going through that. Today, I did want to rehash that, I really just wanted to touch on the process, just kind of remind you, as well as inform the public, on what it is we did and how we got to where we are today. So basically, again, starting out mid-June, we started out by collecting relevant studies, so we got the C2C, C2C Plan, the CIP, Department Work Plans, Watershed Nano Study that was recently completed, had those retained as reference for us as we started going forward with collecting input from staff. And so the first step beyond that was to create an internal survey, to be used as a tool, not necessarily for statistical purposes, but as a tool for collecting feedback from various staff members. We were able to get feedback from 17 people on staff, primarily department heads, and there are other staff members. From there, we were able to put together a list of dozens of priorities, of projects that they felt were important for the next five-year plan. From there, we were able to set up meetings with each one of you, you mentioned earlier, an hour or almost, usually an hour, maybe a little more on a few of them, with Board Supervisors, as well as the directors for the internal and external operations. So we did five 1-on-1 interviews there, to get some further context for the priorities, as well as give the, you guys each an opportunity to give us your take on the next five years for Story County. From there, we were able to put together the findings in different categories of those kind of larger categories to start off with. We started off with human resources, technology, observations, or operations, excuse me, regulations, facilities, services, water quality, parks and rags, and then we had miscellaneous. Again, we started at the point where we got all the feedback, working with Leanne and some of their staff members, we were able to kind of narrow those down a little bit to where we are today with our five core categories. We created the priorities and the goals and action steps plan, similar to what you have, but... but slightly different in that we have worked out our five main goals, a priority, then an action step under each one. More or less, what we typically do for...we do as JEO for our strategic plans, just a little bit different, but very similar. Again, we worked back and forth with Leanne and her staff for about a six-week period, doing minor iterations, change back and forth. She's able to come to you on the night to do the discussion on priorities, high, low, medium-high, as well as requesting changes at that time. And then now we're at a point where Leanne has some comments received from staff to move forward with any other requirement of the plan.
Good. Questions about the process that we use, Morris?
I'm on the survey. Thank you, Clint, for helping us through this process. There've been a couple delays, and we worked through some items on our end to just get the wording that we felt was best to help Story County achieve success. What I'm going to present is an overview of the comments that were received. Shelley and I only have like three or four slides, but if you don't mind hitting the lights. And then I'll go over the draft plan with those changes identified. We did receive comments from Mike Cox, Story County Conservation, Stacy Herage, our Story County reporter, and then Jerry Moore with Planning Development Department. And I'm going to ask you to read those, because they're kind of smaller in font, but all these changes have been identified in the draft plan. So this is the level of response we received from Mike, and as we go through all the note where those changes are in the draft plan, too. Next, Stacy Herage, just I do want to share her comments. The internal challenges include our spot on, in my opinion. Objective two of county operations is imperative regarding mission statement. While reviewing proposed plan compared to previous plan for fiscal years 16 to 18, there's not a specific timeline that includes a start date and end date for each objective. Based on priority given for each objective, should we add a timeline? I did have an opportunity to call up with Stacy on this, and I said, yes, we discussed that, but the direction we're going for at this point is to build out the work programs. And we get that level of detail, the level of detail at that level rather than the higher level strategic plan itself. Then the last point was possibly add the strategic plan update to our formerly department meetings, so we know where we are and where we are headed. And the more we talk about, the more it will become part of our discussions with our staff. That's an idea, and that is a fantastic idea. And I did thank Stacy for those comments. Last, Jerry, four, again, it's really difficult to read up there. Jerry did indicate, thank you for opportunity to review the plan. We organize our comments in three areas. One, support the item. Two, we think our department can serve a secondary role. And three, we request additional information regarding our department. Department's role is, in some instances, appears to be a new functional role for our department. So I'll specifically hit on that last one as we go through the board. Then Jerry, in addition, members with his staff, did provide some feedback to the plan itself, and those changes are reflective grammatical, or just rewording, those are reflective possible changes we're going to consider. So with that, if you have a copy of the plan that was on today's agenda, I'll just go through quickly the most changes. On page one, the second paragraph, is a rewording that currently says, the intent of the project and goals is to maintain and further enhance quality of life and economic vitality. Strike service two replaces four, Story County. The next page, page two, again, the second paragraph, where it's discussing the interviews, as Clint noted, with you all, just clarifying each long interview, having with these individuals. Just helps clarify. And then, if you could please go to page five, under quality of life. Mike Cox did add that we have recreational opportunities to the list of the quality of life assets.
He didn't feel that was covered under access to natural amenities, then?
I think he was...
Okay. My thought here a little bit is that this is a plan that's going to guide us for the next four to five years, and us maybe somewhat fluid, I mean, as far as the board itself, but not the county, obviously. So I'm just kind of wondering about putting in recreational opportunities as a separate item that seems pretty focused on one department, when the rest of the steps does not focus on one department anyway. So that's my comment in there.
Yeah, and Morris, I appreciate that. Do you think adding...so I completely get where Mike's coming from, wanting this added, and it actually seems to kind of make some sense to me, but I like your thoughts on it. Do you think that this would create an undue burden or shift the plan in some way that would be problematic?
I think it's back to, as staff weren't to work priorities, and I say staff in the collective, the entire, the county staff, is that if recreational opportunities is signaled out, that there might at some point be interpreted as an undue emphasis on one particular area, as opposed to the rest of the statement says definitely access to natural amenities. There's what we do with our recreational opportunities. Diverse and engaged citizens, once again, they're covered under there. Strong economic foundation, that's something that can be applied to different functions and different departments of the community, and geographic proximity to other economic opportunities. So your question was, do I think of places an undue burden, I think is what you were asking. I'm just concerned that there would be an argument down the road that conservation and recreational opportunities might take precedent over some other areas based upon the plan.
I'm looking over your shoulder at the point that we are looking to refresh. Two and a half years on the board, there's never been a redo of that that I'm a part of. And I guess we're worried about having to put a new refreshment of that plan in place, and I don't get why we haven't get into the weeds on some of those verbiage.
Probably from my 20 years in different settings, watching what happens.
We operate in a government sense. I appreciate what you've done. We all have a lot of different life experiences, but I think this is a government conversation. And I would like to approach it with a government conversation. And once again, what we're talking about here, let's distill it down, we are talking about those three plaques over Lawrence's shoulders to do a redo. And that said, it's just like, I'm not moved one way or the other on the verbiage that is being proposed, in the sense that it's just like, I take Mike Cox as an accomplished individual that is looking to improve a document, not to move it in a particular direction that serves only he and his.
Okay. Given that attitude, Marty, I mean, you know, in your interpretation of that, I mean, I do not feel a place is an undue burden. To answer Rick's, you know, question there, I'm just concerned, in hearing what you're saying, that he's...you don't think that Mike is trying to target resources or emphasis of future projects his way? I'm okay with leaving it then. I wanted to point it out that that's not the intent here.
As I understand the way conservation works, they do a great job of leveraging outside dollars. They don't...when they do projects, they go outside in the grant process and private solicitation. They're not coming to us with an open hand unless, I think, they're just stating purpose.
Well, and I'll say, I'll say two things about this. One, I think it is an important component that boards ought to consider. Two, I think it's, while I think you're 100% correct, this would primarily speak to conservation, I think it speaks beyond conservation in, when we are doing a new road and Darren Moon has put something in, we would strongly consider putting a trail off to the side as we did going north to Gilbert, and I think this more speaks to that. As long as you're not concerned that it gets us off track of where you think our priorities are, I would suggest we go ahead and leave it as suggested.
That's fine. We can move on with that.
Thank you.
Next page is actually the handout I just gave you all. This was something that Mike had emailed back. It's under the second, under the policy and regulations. And note that the spelling error, you all have your copy for continuing, it's not, it's actually in there. It's, the statement would read, Story County will continue that practice to continue to address valid concerns as they arise. Rather than...
Too many continued yet.
Again, this is taken as suggested. Options, straight handout, continue that practice to address valid concerns as they arise. Remember this, I can continue. So that is what was requested as well. Going to the next page, page eight, now actually into the projects themselves, or the objectives and action steps themselves. Under objective one, add increase community engagement and expand. Under step one, under objective one, at the end of that statement, pushing regarding Story County programs and offerings. Under objective two, add planning and development as an officer department. Any questions on page eight? On page nine, I'm going to start by adding, step number four, adding conservation, because that's going to connect any of these throughout Story County. And then revisiting Jerry's concerns and comments, he did identify for steps two, four, and five, this would be a new role for Planning Development Department, so they would need some additional information that go forward, and these items are built into work programs and so forth. But that would be for steps two, four, and five. Any questions on page nine?
So we did, so two, four, and five, we did as a pilot project at one point. This has been a few years ago, but it has not been something that we've gone beyond that pilot project, is that right?
They've been under...yes and no. It's not been under the Planning Development Department. They have a project of which I've been involved in the board as a transition under the Board of Supervisors.
Okay.
I still, number four, the connectivity, I still have the connect Iowa on my work program and doing different aspects of that as I go forward. So it would be some shifting of either growing different programs or shifting responsibilities.
But by having two, four, and five in there, we aren't necessarily saying this is Planning and Development's responsibility, we're just listing them as a potential partner in this ongoing responsibility.
And just so that maybe a number four, to clarify, we're talking here about broad connectivity, but could it not also apply to the trails, like connectivity, or are we going to just view this as strictly in this particular item, broad there?
This is strictly broad there.
Okay. So maybe it's just to add broad there, connectivity.
Yeah, I think that will.
Then the next page is page 13. Step number two.
Can we go back to page 10, please?
Okay.
10.
Yep.
Under objective one, which is the succession plans, and I talked about this when we last discussed, when we went through it in the ratings, about the succession plans, and my concern just that, you know, we make it very clear that just because we've offered training to allow someone to expand their skills, and because we've set a goal to establish succession plans, that does not mean that employees automatically will be the people who would fill these leadership roles in the future. So I'm just asking you guys if we should include a clause to establish succession plans, comma, as incorporate, or as including external and internal candidates, comma, to ensure, or whether you feel it's clear enough here?
Yeah, I feel it's clear enough here. I think the point you make is a great point. I don't think there's anything in here that implies in any way that somebody's just automatically going to get a position without anything added. Marty, you feel differently than that?
We're right to our state, we can do. You know, I loathe to put anything in that minds a future board, in the sense that I think we have the latitude, in a plainly stated manner, that says whoever sets up here is concerned.
Okay. I just wanted, one more time, one little piece of...
Well, I hear where you're going, but I think we have the latitude to do it, and once again, I'm not trying to shade us into a corner where we don't mean...some previous board says, well, they said this, and then if you're reading it and being adherent to what was written there, I guess it does say we can't do that. I don't want to turn that wish into a future conversation where a board doesn't feel the ability to act in the way it feels best.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'm sorry, Leanne, now we're back to 15, let's...
13. 13. Step two, you see actually two lines. The one in red is the one that is supposed to replace the one above that. Continue to research and see the variety of other sources, including contracts, gifts, and grants, and other outside resources to leverage Story County Conservation laws, rather than...
I take the first and now, just to make it clear, but that was, because, you know, but either way is good. It's...
Gifts, grants, and other outside resources, yeah.
Next is page 16. Oh, no, I'm sorry, page 14 is just under step number one, assess needs, rather than just assess need. No, it's under objective three. Then page 16. Under objective two, after technology needs, adding more assessments, and then striking the need on 911. Page 17, rewriting rather than established cost estimates, just writing the stack, estimate costs.
Yep.
And then page 18, objective one, adding to the objective storm water and waste water management, or waste water management. And then rewriting step number one, as proposed, which would be develop, implement, and monitor strategies and partnerships to build upon the county-wide watershed assessments, and adding planning and development. And then under objective two, step one, rather than related to, replace with including.
As we were reasoning through there, I did have one possible addition for back to 13. Step one, objective one, is continue to enhance park facilities throughout Story County. And step one is review and prioritize capital improvement plans, projects outlawed, outlined, sorry, I can't read now, in the Story County Conservation Board's current strategic plan review board. We have the department doing that in its entirety, conservation. And may everyone reading that feel that the Board of Supervisors at some point also would weigh in on that, given priorities that might be on the board's list that are not on conservation's list, or the other way around, that possibly the board might reorder those.
Well, yeah, but so conservation is their own entity, and they get to have their own strategic plan and their own capital improvements plan. Now, we're the budgetary entity, so the fact that they have it doesn't bind us to doing it, and if it goes from conservation to us, it goes through our process, which is our own capital improvement plan. So I actually felt more secure since it was just conservation than if they were putting the Board of Supervisors in there and trying to tie us to.
I referenced this a little bit in the very end of our meeting with the neighbors, which of course was just a broad agenda type thing, and there was a comment made about wanting a trail, having a new store in city, and my comment was about, geez, McCallsburg is still waiting for their trail to be paved. And so that's where, as I went through this again over the weekend to reread this and think about, where is our input here as the Board of Supervisors when we're hearing from constituents that they feel they've been made a promise, or maybe it's just their expectations and there isn't a promise out there, but that they've been moved down the priority list? That's my question.
I would comment this in the sense that the previous board assigned the NAPL money to conservation. And if you harken back to January, one of the things that we expressed, and I think some of us more full-throated in it, is we'd like to see some of those powers going to possibly cabinets. And you see a cabinet, they took it up, and you see construction ongoing. We have the ability to... We have the ability to indirectly or tangibly move this board, but then again, they, they work in a process of by themselves. And we are funders, we get the ultimate say.
Right, and that, and that's where I'm headed. Exactly, Marty, you and I are seeing this the same way. We're the ones who control the money, if you will, okay? And we've given them that particular money on the DAPL, the DAPL payout, you know, for them to use as they want. But does that exclude us, and I'm not talking about the DAPL money, I'm talking about general money we give, does that exclude us from saying on their plan, look, you've just added three new segments to be paid that have never been discussed before? And meanwhile, you have residents out there who have at least an expectation to determine, you know, that their segments are getting paid. And so, so that's, that's where, where do we come in as the funders, the ultimate controllers of the dollars here?
At budget time.
Okay. So maybe this here is fine.
Absolutely, I mean, that's their responsibility. It's their purview to do their own strategic plan, to have their own priority list. But then they come and they sit before the board when it's budget time and say, hey, here's what we want to do. And we say, well, either, okay, or we don't have the money, or we've got another... Cabin is a great example. The cabin wasn't anywhere on their priority list until we started pushing it. Right? And so I don't want us as a, as a board of supervisors to try to insert ourselves on another board's purview. And, and as I see it, this conservation strategic plan is conservation board's purview. They just still have to come to the board supervisors to get the funding to implement that.
And who is held responsible with if McCall'sburg feels very strongly, or Indiana, I'm sorry, I don't want to pick on McCall'sburg, okay? I just have, they brought this issue to me.
Sure.
They're going to be going back to them next month. So any community who feel, they come to the supervisors because we are the money people. And there is this other board out there who has some autonomy. So where does the autonomy rest, right, where does the final decision really rest?
Board supervisors.
Can we say with us to say, okay, we really want you to do this project. You've asked for two and a half million dollars, but we're telling you we want six hundred thousand of it to go toward the paving of so many of the segments for the McCall'sburg trail. So you feel that's a comfort level for us, it's not...
Oh, no, we won't, I didn't say comfort level, because, so Story County is one of the few counties anywhere that has a really positive give and take working relationship, with specifically its conservation board. What I'm telling you is that, that we as a board of supervisors do not have the, we don't appropriately have the authority to, to tell them what their goals or priorities are. We just have the ability to fund or not fund. Plain and simple. And, and at the end of the day, if a board of supervisors decides that it's paving the trail in McCall'sburg, the trail in McCall'sburg is going to get paved.
But it may not be with conservation.
But conservation may not be happy about it.
I would point to Jordan Akers as being, I think we got a seventy-five thousand dollar ask through that, or land acquisition process that just came fully online this fall. And our exposure by what it was all said and done was how much?
It was, it was an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar project, and we ended up putting ten thousand general fund dollars.
But I believe in the budgeting process that came to us were a much higher number, knowing that we had a little unease, or that the fact that we tasked them with finding the additional difference, because we didn't want to necessarily appropriate it, they did. I think that that was a conversation that is fluid in the sense they have their, their wishes and their wants. The communities, Mike Cox, you know, you see him at a hundred meetings up in Orange, he's here, and they want to talk about the, the paving of the Prairie Trail up north. You go into a conversation in Colo, they want to talk about instituting a bike trail between Colo and Hipper Grove. These conversations happen in, in a departmental sense with communities. We get made aware of it because the thing is somebody might want to outreach it to us as a supervisor. Yet, once again, I think that they do things on a strategic level that we may or may not know in particulars. For example, representative, Darren would turn to him if there's anything in regards to, anybody can ask for anything, they do it.
Well, but that's one thing I want to determine in November, and please, I see a legal counsel out there, is let us know if we've gotten too far away from the discussion here on the agenda item. But in that particular situation, they already have a, they, they seem to believe that it's going, it was going to happen. So I wouldn't even clarify with them next month, what exactly were your expectations? And in fact, I'm got Mike complaining, I'm inviting him to see if he wants to come along. Okay, so, but, but my question is broader about if we want something done, we feel that it's in the best interest of the county due to the transportation plan, due to something that we feel is a higher priority than is on the list and with conservation, all right? Then if we say we're going to put money toward this, Rick, are you saying we're putting money in this, we've got conservation board sitting in front of us, and we say, we're going to put X number of dollars into this for this purpose, it happens to fall under your board, so you're going to be responsible for executing it? Do we, is that the level you're looking at there? See, I, that's where I see the disconnect.
No, I, I think that is, well, I don't think there is a disconnect. I think it's a question of are we going to try to mandate that a separate board operate the way we want a separate board to operate, which I think is interpr- I think many board supervisors try to do exactly that with their conservation board. What we've done a good job, and this is long before me, what we've done a good job of here in Story County is finding a way to work collaboratively and finding a way to come together. All I'm telling you is that statutorily, the board of supervisors is the funding authority. And so at the end of the day, if the board of supervisors were to say, we want, we want a trail between McCall'sburg and Zira. First thing I'd say to the board supervisors is, okay, give me the metrics on that. Why are you spending dollars for that trail that gets ten users a day? And you're not using your dollars on a trail that's getting a hundred users a day? That'd be the first thing I'd ask. But let's say the board decided that, by golly, we're paving a trail from McCall'sburg to Zira. Either conservation would say, absolutely, we control Prairie Route Trail, let's pave it, or the board of supervisors can always go in and do exactly what we did in Gilbert and pave our own trail. The board has the ability, we are the elected statutory responsibility to make decisions like that. But, but any board that's foolish enough, this is my personal editorializing here. Any, any board of supervisors that's foolish enough to think that they know better, exclusive of the opinion of one of their other boards and commissions, I'm not saying we can't have disagreements, but just automatically thinks they know better, I think they're making a big mistake.
Well, I agree with you that automatically thinks anyway, but I think you just connected the dots for me. It's when we could go in and via the light secondary road and accomplish it ourselves without interfering with their theory. In that case, thank you for the time you've given us for this discussion. And I withdraw the suggestion board of supervisors be inserted there now that I've clarified where we still have it in. Thank you.
So the next steps. I'll finalize based on today's actions. I'll look to get the final changes completed and have a copy that we can release for the public on our website, share with all the elected officials and department heads. For the children to get, if you agree with Stacy's recommendation, we get an item, a standing item on the quarterly department head elected officials meetings. Do a press release to them as an entity of adoptiveness. And then lastly, tackle the posters on the wall. Unfortunately, I think that flies with me, not you, so.
I can assist.
Okay, thank you. With that, are there any questions?
Appreciate the opportunity to go through this, had a very good conversation in my hour, and I'm glad to see we came out of it. And it brings it, brings it back to us, as we, as we've just done, you know, this is us, I think this is how we face it, where we say that this is what we want to do, but I'm sure other boards in future times will have this conversation five years or sooner. But this is what I have got with doing this.
Yeah, thank you. I'm really impressed with the process. And thank you to the staff, because I know they carried the heavy load on this. You know, I'm looking at your eyes of your positions. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I also want to say thank you guys for your, your time and effort as well. Leanne was a great partner and a great collaborator on this as well, so, that's right, thank you.
Super. Take a motion to approve.
I would move consideration of our street plan fiscal years nineteen to twenty-three as presented.
My second.
Motion and a second, just noting that there's a couple of, of minor, I'm going to call them scrutiny changes, as noted in our conversation. So with that caveat, any further conversation?
None.
Kitty?
Aye.
Olsen?
Aye.
All right, next is consideration of minutes for October ninth, October sixteenth, and October twenty-third.
I would move as they are now presented with the one small word change.
Yeah, so there was a word change of supervisor Olsen read a statement, supervisor Olsen made a statement.
Correct, that's it.
Second.
Motion and a second to Olsen.
Aye.
Kitty?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. No personnel actions, claims for November first, which it does.
I will second that.
Motion and second, Kitty?
Aye.
Olsen?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Consent agenda board. Olsen?
Aye.
Kitty? Sanders, aye. No public hearing items, no additional items, no agency reports. Departmental report, we get to hear from Carla Webb at Community Services today.
Morning, Carla.
Hi, Carla.
Good morning. Okay, so today I'm talking about our quarterly report from July to September twenty eighteen. We also start off talking about our general assistance program. For single households assisted, we had sixteen, and for family households, fifteen of those, for a total of thirty-one for July through September. For notices of decision where we were unable to assist individuals referred into other organizations, we had two hundred and eighty of those applicants. We had twenty-five individuals who applied but did not return to our office. For dollars extended, we provided ten thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars in rent, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars seventy percent in utilities. And then other items, both of this is going to be, or burial with a little bit of transportation, I believe, is two thousand eight hundred dollars. We don't currently have anybody in the SSI interim program for substance use services. We provided payment on three different charges there. In regards to the CICS region, we are a collaborating, collaborating member on the children's toll being collaborative grant that I assess. As I sit on the steering committee as representative of CICS, this is a new grant that I assess secure. I believe it starts ten one and runs through the end of June. It's covering all of the CICS region, four, I believe, about five or six counties included in the region. Now it covers all eleven counties. The grant is focusing on prevention and early intervention services, including mental health crisis services to support developing children ages from age twelve and eighteen.
So that's an expansion on the ages, right?
Correct, yeah.
Which is good.
Yeah, yeah, I believe before it was up to age eight, and tomorrow it's age twelve. So we had our first larger stakeholder meeting a couple of weeks back. I think we had good representation there, individuals from all eleven counties throughout the region. We'll have two more stakeholder meetings between now and the end. Green County became official as of July one. We had staff going to that county, working to just bring them on board. We've got a service coordinator there, and later, she was previously with Green County, so she's a great volunteer. Patty Tribal Days is participating, and our coordination officer is Mrs. Thor, so she's working there too. During the quarter, as I believe it was last week, we were here and talked with you about the request received from Saraford County. So the administrative team did do background work on that, during the request of our board, collecting a lot of information. At our governing board meeting last week, the board did approve to accept Saraford's request to withdraw their letter of intent to join our region. During the quarter, the governing board did renew a consultant agreement with Karen Walters-Crayman. So this is the second agreement with her now, so this one runs from September through December thirty-first. Areas of focus that Karen is assisting us with is looking into value-based purchasing in long-term services and supports, identifying value-based purchasing projects, pilot projects, and looking at potential rated funding models, data collection connectivity, legislative proposals, and ways regional dollars could potentially drive on medical funds. We are also in conversation with other regions who are interested in joining this partnership. So I believe we have one region that's signing the MLU, and a couple other ones that are taking the walk to their local boards and bands. We agreed to shoot a RFP for drop-in centers and drop-in center services in Warren County. We participated in the mental health expo held in Story County in September. Approximately, there were about fifty-five professionals that participated in the lunch and learn, and then estimated four hundred and fifty individuals that attended the evening event with Joan Becker. We had twenty-eight individuals that night at the event as well, sharing information on mental health and services.
It was a really, really good event.
It really was, yeah. See, we completed a contract amendment with NAMI Central Iowa for funding two additional crisis intervention trainings for law enforcement, the next one will be coming up here next week. And I believe, they still have some openings, so we're still, I sent the information out to our local law enforcement agencies again last week letting them know about those available spots. We do have quite a few coming from Story County already. The next training, so we have that training. The other thing that we did was we completed a contract amendment with Mary Grayden Medical Center for medication prescribing and management onboarding and access to higher levels of practice in the project money. And she is currently overseeing the crisis implementation, which is as well as her, maybe we're all going to mention it. In regards to community services, we had three staff participate in the Cooperat training that was held this quarter. Our office continues to be involved in the opioid task force and the Nevada Substance Use Task Force. May fail to mention in here, there was a community conversation event that the opioid task force sponsored that took place in September, with Peter Pomedowski presenting. The next event is coming up in November. We want to have families who have been affected by the COVID pandemic share their stories. We continue to have staff involved with the Two Rivers Regional Committee regarding the entry for shelter care. We also have staff that are leading local agencies exploring the most prevention central intake concept. The lunch and learn was held in September by local most preventive agencies and stakeholders to discuss this concept and is more interested in anticipating operation continually. This quarter, Aaron Greenberg and the CBSO completed a hundred and seven interviews with veterans who were supplied his buses.
Carla, going back up here to the Two Rivers Regional Committee, do you know if Kathy Johnson or someone else would be able to attend on Thursday?
Kathy is not able to attend, and I don't think we have any of the nails going from our office. With us being down a staff member right now, our service coordinator is our...
Okay, all right. Because, you know, I normally attend and then pass on or heads up, you know, if there's something going on. But I don't believe I'll be there because I have two trainees today, so, okay. So, and they're going to be discussing a couple of concepts, so maybe Kathy wants to jump in later. Okay, thanks.
Good. Could you speak a little bit about the stepping up from the way you attended last week?
Yeah, so last week, there was a statewide stepping up summit that was held sponsored by ISAC. And then they also had an individual from NABO that her primary focus is, is working on a stepping up initiative. So from Story County, Marty, myself, Micah Anderson, Assistant General Administrator, and then Tyler Lennon, Service Coordinator with our office attending. We sat at the table with Johnson County Sheriff and the General Agent Staff Member. I think it was a great opportunity for us to come back together, talk about ideas, next steps for us. We came up with some tasks that we're going to follow up on to try and move our, the work that we're doing in reducing the number of individualized, or number of individual, individuals in our county jails around this. So we've got some specific tasks that we're going to be doing. And one of the things I've talked about was the peer support services. I think there was a lot of discussion just around the group, that trying to get those services connected if you're in the jails or asked to go out of jail. I thought it was, it was a great event.
I agree. We would probably be contacting other organizations and that individual goes to speak or to, or to appear component. to, in regards to your component, which he had a very compelling story, his life story, how he was brought into drug use, you know, and physical abuse, and he really got to, he was in the down and very mode, and it really spoke to a lot of people. And I would have to say, we took his business card, I expect to be, I possibly bring that back here, in regards to this, might be something we look to try to implement in Story County. We're up there, chance will take away, so we'll probably date us back.
Outstanding. Carla, thank you.
You too.
Absolutely. Liaison assignment, oh, so, well, I guess we got to do public one two again. Other reports first, there aren't any. Public form number two, stock tune for members of public to comment on items, really, anything you want to comment on. Anybody wishing to do so, come on up to the microphone. Shocked that nobody came up to the microphone. So we'll move on to liaison assignments. Marty.
Big Mal Health Week again. Carla, may I mention that the fact that we have stepping up foreign down in Des Moines, and don't need to re-go over what we did, but I think you'll see things that will fall out of that, which was our second year of attending. We also had a great week last week, we opened the Crisis Stabilization Center, Big Rock, and thank you for our other partners that are joining us and doing that. We had a great CICS meeting in Thursday here, and we did formally, this is about the aspect of Saroporto, and I think that is, as I was opposed to, approached on Friday, a meeting up in Eldora, Central Algeable Justice, that there are other regions, there are other counties that are looking possibly, and if they could form an alliance, or that they may, as I would have to, if they form their own region, because we are kind of where we are, we have such a large geographical footprint that we make some of our partners uncomfortable. We're fortunate to be right here in the middle, but that is not, that's not a very good thing. So that was all the advice I gave them, and tonight, with all our trick or treaters, everybody be careful driving around.
You got trick or treaters tonight in Nevada, huh?
I, not wherever I live.
Oh, are you?
If they're out there, then I'll take pictures.
Everybody dress up tonight.
Tonight is downtown.
Is downtown.
That's why my good camera was charging.
Oh, getting ready, you know, there may be a few pictures.
Those kids are important.
I think you have a lot of municipalities tonight, it's a night, and it's all good.
Anything else?
Nothing.
Good. Morris.
Community and Family Resources met. I think some key things out of that meeting, first of all, that we're, the agency is going to hire two more community peer support people, increasing from one to three, so keeping on that theme. We also have signed a contract with a provider out of Des Moines to offer medication-based abuse, substance abuse opioid treatment. The primary healthcare provider that has been coming up, is coming up here to Story County, is now full. They can only treat so many people under their license at one time, so that's taken care of. It was nice to see Webster County back at the table. It sounds like that that disagreement has been settled, and so now I think the accounting has to go forward, et cetera. So that's not a problem there. And I was re-elected as treasurer, which is on the executive committee, but fortunately I don't have a lot to do on a regular basis, so. So I would say that was one of the things, the only thing I'd like to talk about at meeting number two, that I did not represent Story County at, I would as an individual, but it was the annual H Humane Society of the United States, the Iowa chapter has a pre-legislative review for the Iowa legislature, and the discussion of our new chapter forty-five came up, and they were interested in it. So I see Ethan out there, so I thought I'd let Ethan know, and then worked on it, and obviously Sue McCasky is not here, but there's some interest from other people in Iowa on that, and I'll let that go.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing else from us, for us, Ethan, come on up and talk to us about potentially going into closed session.
Morning Ethan.
Morning. I have a request that we go to closed session, since I have a twenty-one point five on the seat, discuss matters that are presently in litigation, strategy of matters of council, where public disclosure would disavow and practice.
I would move that we return, so may attend closed session.
I second.
Yeah, so we'll go, just clarify, we'll go, we'll, we'll take a five-minute recess, we'll reconvene in closed session in the board's conference room. Once the closed session is done, we'll come back out here, report out whatever needs, might need to be reported out from the closed session, and then conclude our meeting. So that's the process we're going to take. You agree with that as our motion? You second that?
Second.
Chitty.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. So five-minute recess, and then we'll reconvene in closed session. Right here.
First staff.
We're recording. Three-day.
All right.
Are we recording, or do we?
No, I'll be recording. So I can get shell. You going to get us started, audio recording?
I think so. Six seconds, and then we get this done, probably.
All right, so it is just afternoon, and we're coming back from closed session, so we're reconvening in open session. Civil attorney Ethan Anderson set the record for us as we come out of closed session.
Yes, we, the board can't take action in closed session, so the long act that we take today is the county attorney's office will brief next week's agenda to bring the discussion forward for the, for open session.
So there'll be an item, based on our conversation in closed session today, there will be an item of consideration for the board on next week's agenda for us to discuss and take action on.
That's correct.
Any further questions, board?
No.
If there's none, I take a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll adjourn.